Good evening, I call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in heart. Thank you for joining us this evening. Please be advised that in event of an fire emergency and alarm will sound, please know all emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request everyone, please turn your cell phones to silence. Thank you for your cooperation. Thank you all for joining us. We are going to start our meeting with additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda. Dr. Chanel.
We do have additions this evening to the agenda. You're going to see there in your additions, a budget transfer, the district treasures report, and an appropriations and revenue status report. Mr. Nardole was in this past weekend to complete that for us. So it's here for you. Thank you very much. Moving on to our first order of business, the consent agenda. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the following consent agenda, 1 through 7 as listed. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is carried. We are going to move on to communications. We will start off tonight with correspondence and points of pride. Mrs. Rolle, I believe you're the first on that list.
I am. The Calmum Elementary with the support of the PTO successfully concluded its annual Parents as Reading Partners (PARP) program themed Rock Out With A Good Book. The program, which ran from March 17th to March 21st, aimed to encourage reading development and a love of books among students. The week-long initiative featured various events and activities during the school day, culminating in the highly anticipated PARP Fest on Friday, March 21st. The PARP Fest, a longstanding tradition at Calmum Elementary, provided a fun and engaging environment for families to celebrate reading together.
Our elementary school welcomes Kelly DePucciio, who is the number one New York Times bestselling author of over 40 stories for children. Her books have received numerous starred reviews and awards. She hosted four different presentations throughout the day covering the entire school. She shared her journey as an author, her process of writing, and the fun way she has come up with her book ideas. Her inspiring method also inspired students to never give up on their dreams and how everyone can be a superhero to someone else. Special thanks to our librarian, Ms. Wilson Monahan, for coordinating this special experience.
And our middle and high school library hosted an author visit and workshop with author Mackenzie Reed. She led our raiders through a presentation on Let's Write A Book and shared the creative writing process. As a culmination of the visit, students wrote a pitch for a book they hoped to author.
A huge congratulation goes out to the musical cast, pit, and crew of The Drowsy Chaperone. The show kept the audience laughing and it was clear the cast enjoyed it too.
We were well represented at the Section 5 Athletics Middle School Leadership Conference at the Rotary Sunshine Camp in Rush. Teacher Nora Anderson and students Leslie McNear, Blake Sickles, and Chloe Warner attended.
Fantastic. Before moving on to board committee reports, I just want to put on the board's radar a few things that are upcoming. First being, our superintendent evaluation process will start soon, so be on the lookout for that. Our board self-evaluation process will also be starting soon. You're going to see those fairly close together, so it's going to be a bit of a time commitment to complete those. And just a reminder that May 13th is our annual budget hearing and meet the candidate night, which we have historically, for the past several years, been doing questions to the candidates from government class. Dr. Chanel has reached out to government class and they are preparing those questions. So we are on track to do the same thing we have been doing.
Madam President, may I throw a suggestion out there?
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I believe I read that on May 13th is going to take place in here. I, with the, I don't want to word this, with the...
Should we consider moving into the auditorium?
With the confusion I've seen people offering on social media, I think we're sadly mistaken if we think we're going to. But maybe only seven people will come.
I'd rather be prepared for the people that are here, so we can consider moving that to the auditorium. That would be no problem. I'd rather be prepared for that to make sure everyone has a seat.
Very good, thank you.
And I appreciate you saying that.
Absolutely.
Next, moving on to board committee reports. We're going to not do compact committee, though we're going to do that in a second. So are there other board committees that have met outside of compact?
You're doing both middle and high and elementary later? Okay.
Okay, there are none of those. There are no, or no, there are guests of the board. Shannon Davis and Mike Ferrari, am I saying it correct?
Yep.
They are here to present today the updates for our capital project. So I will welcome you to the podium and you guys can update us on what is happening. We appreciate you coming out tonight.
So I'll chime in for just a second while they get organized. The last time that the board saw the capital project, we were really talking about it in its inception as we were taking it out to the community for a vote. Now you're going to see the capital project overview in terms of bids have come in and you're going to see exactly what is going to happen in this project as we know it to date. So it'd be a nice update for you of the realness of this particular capital project.
Could somebody please lower the shades back there? I cannot see anything. Bet you guys can. Thank you very much.
I was like, do they have faces?
Okay, you got it working out. So, thanks for having us. I'll get into it when these tapes go down a little bit more. But just want to give you guys a quick update on the last time we were here, I think was when we received bids and we were looking for approval on contracts. So we've been working fast and furious to get all the contractors started up and get things going. So what we want to do is kind of run through the way we've phased out the project so you know what's coming and when and where we're going to be. And then we'll touch on some of the design elements that I don't think you guys have seen, where some of the design landed at the end of the project. So we've got some renderings that Shannon will talk to. Oh, there we go, okay. So this is just a snapshot, this is our project budget summary. This is all of the contracts we asked you to approve at that previous meeting. I just have this slide to show you that this is how we communicate back and forth with the district on the finances of the project as we go through. The top section lists all of our contracts. The bottom section is all of our contracts and this is how we track change management through the project. So every month, this sheet goes into a report that's delivered to the district and to the board as well. So getting right into what this project is going to look like. This is our site logistics plan. A lot of what we're going to talk about here, I want to preface that the dates we're talking about are how campus phased out the project and then bid the project. So at a minimum, the contractors are held to the dates we're going to talk about here. One of the requirements, though, part of the startup with them, is they owe us their construction schedules. We're in the process of collecting those right now. It's our job then to take those, stitch them together into our master schedule. And then once everybody agrees upon that, that becomes our construction schedule going forward. But these dates we're talking about are the bare minimum what they're held to in their contract. And there'll be some fluctuation to them. So, all the colors you see here on the screen, this is our site work. I'll start with the yellow areas. These are some areas that we've identified for staging. Contractors to lay down materials, maybe put a trailer to store some things in. There's a couple and there's four different areas. We've got one down in the south parking lot across, next to the tennis court, most likely where we're going to be starting out with the staging area. Over, jumping up to the other side of the elementary by the loop, we will be using that spot to do some roofwork, stage some roofing and lift materials up onto the roof. We're looking at the front yard out there, possibly for another staging area if we need it. And then, once we get over to the high school, we've got that area back there kind of identified for that. All those areas will be restored and the grass will be replanted after we're done with construction. The other colored areas are all pavement that's in this project. So how we originally phased this was the south parking lot next to the tennis courts and the drop-off loop, well, all of the pavement really, from district office through the loop at the elementary building. That's going to happen first. We're going to start at the drop-off loop because that is a full-depth replacement. So that is getting completely dug out and fully replaced with some additional drainage going in there. Then we move across the parking lot. When we start paving, the rest of the site that you see is just going to be a mill and pave. So very little disruption to traffic on site. Again, this is all happening over the summer too, so there is less traffic on site then. But milling and paving, you can drag right over it as they're working, as long as we're out of the way, which we plan on being. So, once we finish the blue areas, they'll move on to the purpley area, do the middle school loop, that's also a mill and pave. And then, the green area highlighted at the high school, we originally had planned to do next summer, not knowing if the contractors would be able to fit everything in this summer. But they've come to us saying they feel confident they can get it all done this first summer, which is great, so that's what we're going to try and do.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
This is, just from remembering, that staging area that's over by the street, isn't that where they play Little League or, you know, Peewee Ball or whatever?
Oh, you mean next to the playground over there?
That one.
That one, yeah. Yeah, the yard is used. If we do use that area, we'll make sure that we're far enough away from there. Everything is fenced off and screened into.
Okay.
Locked up, so it's safe.
It just struck me, I could see little kids.
Yeah, yeah, it's, we've identified as many areas as we could. We may or may not use all of those.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to the elementary school. So the scope of work that's in the project is here. We've got the main office renovations and nurse's office. The entry vestibule renovations and security upgrades there. Window replacements along the side of the building.
West.
West side of the building, thank you. Roof replacement, boiler replacements, the auditorium ceiling lighting replacements, and the library work to convert that into a new library and steam classroom. So this is how we've kind of phased out the job. These are the areas of the building we're going to be working in. And I apologize, the rest of this plan is a little bit light. It might be hard to see. But for orientation purposes, it doesn't show up on the screen. Here's your main entrance. Here's your main office, just so you're oriented on the plan. So, the railing out back, that goes down to the basement and along a loading dock on the back, that's going to be replaced. It's a small item, we're going to try and just pick that off here early in the project for summer. The main office, this was originally scheduled to start on May 1st. The contractor approached us and, actually, a couple contractors approached us about starting early over spring recess. So we would like to take advantage of that. So we've actually been able to pull that work forward a little bit and starting on the 14th of April, which is next Monday. The district will be moving out of the main office over to the temporary location, which you'll see on the subsequent slide here. And once they're out, then we're just going to start demolition. It'll be on second shift because it'll be noisy. Once we get into a little bit more quieter work, we might look at doing some work. Maybe during the day because we're kind of locked in that space, but we'll see how that goes.
Did you say you were going to have roofwork on the second shift? Did I?
Yeah, I'll get to that slide.
I'm sorry.
No problem. The auditorium ceiling and lights, we are starting April of next year and that goes through September of next year. The window replacements are the blue lines you see. So the windows in the stairwells at either end of the building are getting replaced. All along the west end of the building there where the blue is, there are those windows, first and second floor are getting replaced. And then, the orange on the back, first and second floor, we've recently identified those. We're studying what it would cost to bring those into the project and replace them as well. So this is our second floor plan, but it kind of shows you the area of the roof we're going to be working over. This is scheduled to start on the 14th and go through the beginning of June. So the noisy tear-off and demo work will happen over the break. And then, the rest of the roof system is a glued-out system. There won't be any banging, drilling, anything into the roof. So we've talked about starting that work and working through the day while school's in session. If there is any sort of disruption, any sort of smell, any sort of noise, we'll shut them down and figure something else out. They'll come back on the weekend or whatever we have to do to work around the school so we don't disrupt anybody. So the main office move, we're going to be taking the main office there in orange and moving it over to room 112 in this wing over here. We will have signage at the current door to direct traffic over to this other sidewalk. But the main vestibule there that we are going to be working on will remain intact. We're not going to take that down right away. That's going to happen over the summer. The existing main entrance is going to be our accessible entrance into the building because our new entrance, which is down here, has a set of stairs right at the door. So if somebody who can't use the stairs comes to that door, they would have to be directed back to the existing main entrance and they'll be escorted into the building from there. But the room 112 here in gray, you can see is going to be our new main office. We're going to build a wall across the hallway with a new set of temporary double doors. This is going to create a secure vestibule and with the security controls that we're putting on that door, the existing controls at the outside door and at the main office existing classroom door, it will function exactly the same as your current main office and main entry functions. The person in the main office will be able to buzz somebody in the outside and then have control over the door in their office and that temporary door with remote releases. So, once somebody's in this vestibule, they can't get into the building. This also means we have to keep the door at the second floor, the top of these stairs locked, so nobody can get in, but always free to access the building or exit the building.
Will there be line of sight from the secretary in the elementary office to that door or a camera or both?
Good question. Yes, we are installing a doorbell camera over there. So we have...
Because there will be direct line of sight.
Yeah, we have a combination of an existing security camera outside that can see the yard and who's approaching. And then, once they're at the door, we can see their face on the doorbell.
Thank you.
Yep.
And another camera going inside the secure vestibule that's being built will also have a camera in that area?
Right over the temporary door, that dark double door, we're going to put a camera that looks back the other way. So the whole area will be covered.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but a doorbell camera is basically... I'm at a door right here and the doorbell camera is just like looking at me like, just like this. Why wouldn't we just have a nice big camera that has the whole thing? What I think, or see, think of a doorbell camera. I think of something that's just cheap, little. Once in a while you get lucky and the police get lucky and they see something on someone's doorbell camera.
Yep.
It's going to be the same type of doorbell camera you have at the district office?
I was going to say, I can put Sue Moose on the spot for a second and just say, like, when you're answering that door, do you feel like you can see who's at it?
Absolutely.
And communicate with them well before you release the door?
Okay, that's all I needed to hear.
Yep.
That's a great question.
And we're also trying to kind of reuse components that are already part of the project over here that we can use temporarily and then put in their permanent location later on. Going up to the second floor, we'll be getting into the library at the end of this year and that'll be running through the beginning of school 2026. We're going to be emptying out that entire red space there and converting the library and the room next to it into the library and steam room. Again, window replacements on the second floor, shown with the blue and orange.
So getting into some of the design elements. This is a mock-up that we worked with Pella to, you know, talk through all of our design options for the window replacement at this building. The top right corner is what you have existing. These windows were last replaced, I want to say like late 80s. And so the larger picture is just a mock-up of what our new design will be. The material is going to be a fiberglass. It's not going to be vinyl, it's definitely not going to be wood. You know, we heard loud and clear how problematic the wood, you know, frames are for all the staff in that building. And so the design is a narrow transom panel at top that is clear glass. Right now, in your existing, you have that solid spanroil panel. We're returning that to be glass. And then you've got four awning windows in each classroom. Those are meant to be used when it gets really hot and the teachers need some airflow. Those will be your operable windows for that purpose. But then, we're also required to have one rescue window per classroom. Unfortunately, we can't get an awning window as a rescue window, so that one window will be a single hung. But, you know, we worked as hard as we could within the limits of, you know, what we can do with fiberglass windows to make them all look consistent from the exterior.
Shannon, when you talk about awning windows, are you referencing that top piece there? Does that like slot?
No, the little bottom piece will tip out.
And then the double hung would be like this, would be a rescue window here? Here, does that look slightly different?
Yes. Yep, okay, thank you.
Yep. So that'll be the same material that we do on the stair towers, but we are going to be able to keep the existing sort of like ornamental profile that you have at the stair towers as well. And those will also have an operable portion.
We were, we had to comply with State Historic Preservation Society on these windows as well, so...
And SED.
And SED. So the design was narrowed down to this is your option or this is your option, almost.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Will window shades be updated, replaced as appropriate? Yep, all new window shades. Anywhere that we're like heavily renovating are getting all new window shades. Thank you. So this are a couple of shots of what the new main office will be. You know, it was a big push for both of the buildings in this project to have better secure vestibules. So a lot of what I'm going to talk about here has been duplicated over at the high school. Mike, are you going to point for me?
I will, yes.
So the floor plan image is cut off a little bit, but if you can point to the existing main entry doors, right there. So that's all going to stay the same. We're going to replace those doors. But we were tasked with creating like a bigger waiting area because a lot of times during pickup and whatever events, the size that you have now, it's just, it's crowded with all the people in there. So we did move the second set of interior vestibule doors up a little bit. So they fall just below, if you can picture that hallway, there's that first set of gym doors on the right. The new wall with the new doors is just below there. So the outer set of doors and the new inner set of doors will all be on access control. So if somebody comes into the building, they get buzzed in at both locations. When you come in immediately to the left, there is a waiting room. You know, enough for a few chairs. The person at the admin desk inside the suite has a window to interact with them. There's also a window from the admin suite to the vestibule. Windows there as well for any kind of interaction as well. The window from the admin to the vestibule is fixed. There's no moving components to that. It's going to be a bullet-resistant glass. The window from the admin to the waiting room, however, once you're buzzed in, you know, you're in a safe space, it's a safe area. So that window does have a sliding component. If somebody, you know, is coming to drop off a lunch, you know, change of clothes, whatever. And then immediately off the waiting room, we have a conference room. So that conference room is meant to be used for the whole suite, whether it's internal or, you know, there's visitors needing to meet with staff in there. The door into that room from the waiting room is also on access control. And then, the door leaving the conference room to get out of the suite is also on access control. So once, I mean, if you're in these spaces, you're buzzed in and you are not getting into the back of the suite, you know, as a visitor, without that permission. So in the admin area, we've got, you know, a large open desk area set up for two people right now. We've got the principal and assistant principal, top left. And then, on the right, we have the door from the corridor into the space. So that would be used by students and staff coming into the main office. Staff would pick up their mail at the mailbox right behind there. And then above there, we have a storage room, a SRO office, and a restroom meant to be used for the suite. So, you can see that... What?
The kitchenette area here.
Yeah, and a kitchenette area. So the numbered pictures tie to, you know, the shots, you know, on the floor plan. We have one shot looking at the admin desk and at the door where the students and staff are entering. And then shot number two is from the other side of that admin area. Any questions on any of that?
Nope, I'll go back.
Okay. So the next slide is the nurse's office. This is just above the main office. So the door, single door on the bottom there, is the connection door between the main office and the nurse's office. So if a student is in the nurse's office and they ultimately need to be picked up and go home, they can, you know, they don't have to go back out in the hallway. They can just, you know, egress right through to the main office. So in the nurse's office, they have their own single-user toilet room as well. We also have a room for nursing moms. Again, we have an open, a large open desk area for, you know, one to three people working at the desk. There is a small kitchenette area just above the nursing room. We only needed two beds, so those are in the top-left corner with the sliding privacy curtains going around those. And then we have a private exam room in the bottom-left corner. And again, top right corner, there's a door for students to enter right from the corridor. In terms of finishes, I'll just say sort of generally, the way that we approached the finishes, we kept everything pretty neutral. You know, you'll notice that there's a lot of, you know, whites, light grays, and dark grays. And that was very much, you know, there's pops of maroon. But that was very much intentional because during the design phase, the district has a lot of, you know, potential future intent for some custom wall murals and graphics. So if we keep things neutral, then, you know, your graphics will always go. So these are some shots of the second floor library space. These are in the STEM classroom. We took two classrooms and took out the dividing wall to make this, you know, large STEM lab. So the door, the picture in the bottom-left corner, the maroon door that you see is the door to the corridor. So immediately adjacent to that, we have a really long sink area. I think there's three sinks and then the whole backsplash is tiled. This was really designed with kids being really messy in mind. You know, they're using clay, they're using paint, sand, you know, whatever. These surfaces are all very cleanable. The floor material in here is a rubber tile and then all of the new casework there has a solid surface top. So it's all, you know, very cleanable. So this is in the actual library. The footprint of the library is staying pretty much the same. We are adding some new casework along the exterior wall, which in the bottom image is on the left, all that gray casework. We're keeping all of the built-in wood casework that's there. It's beautiful, but we are refinishing it. So we're going to sand it in place, re-stain it, reseal it. And then, we're adding a coffered ceiling. You can see in the bottom-left picture as well with some drop ceiling in between. In the top-right is an image of the library from the corridor. So the entry is going to be a single door with a couple of side lights on either side. And then we've got some built-in display cases. It can be for books or projects or a combination of both. And then, Michelle...
They're looking at me like it's still in there. Every time I'm like, it's still there.
It's still there. We're doing something sculptural, sculptural, to highlight this as the entry and that it's a library. So this is a custom book element that is going to be fabricated from some lightweight material and hung from the ceiling.
Okay. So that kind of takes us through high level of the elementary school. Now we get into the, to this building, middle school, high school. So over here, we've got, again, main office renovations, similar to the other building. It's a full renovation. The auditorium, we're gonna be replacing the seating. We're doing some new finishes in there. Doing some work with the sound booth and some other sound replacements. The library, similar to the elementary building, converting that into innovation centers, STEM space. You may, I think there's a few different areas in that room now. We're replacing a section of the roof that's over the fitness center. Replacing boilers. Public address system, this wasn't on the other side, but in both buildings campus-wide, the public address system is being replaced. Food service elevator, that is non-functional right now. We're getting a new one of those if you move food into the basement. Some hallway finishes, like you can see in this rendering, this is, I think, an older rendering outside of the library. And some air conditioning in our tea room. So the main office scheduled to kick up beginning of 2026. This is going to overlap a little bit with finishing the main office in the elementary building. The idea is we finish up over there, we'll right over here when we start. Actually, that is gonna start to finish a little bit sooner. This actually doesn't overlap, my apologies. The, the library renovations, those are going to be midsummer this year. So going back to the main office really quickly, we phased them out this way so that we did not have both of your main offices down at the same time. That would not have been good for you guys. You would have hated this. Yeah, so then we get into the library this summer, and that's gonna stretch through spring of next year, about this time next year. And then the auditorium renovations are gonna happen this summer through the end of this year. This is the area of roof over the fitness center we are replacing. It's pretty small. And actually, we are now doing some additional work. There's another section of roof that comes down here. We were able to add more of that roof in because of the way our bids came in favorably. So we're doing a little bit more than that right square shows right there. This is ancillary work for the work in the main office over here down below. And over here in these classrooms, the library is below those. We have to get some new air conditioning and mechanicals down from the roof into that space. So we'll be creating, so there's some very small chases in some of these rooms to get the ductwork up and down to the roof. And then that will be happening at the same time both of these areas are being done.
Okay, so over here with the main office, starting at the top at the floor plan, your existing storefront, you've got the three sets of doors. We are gonna put a new piece of storefront in that separates the door on the far right from the other two. And that's going to be the, the main office entry for company. Those doors are planned to be open all the time. And then the inner set of, of doors where that number two is, is what is the set that's on access control. So again, once you are buzzed into, through that doors, you're in a waiting area. And we have, you know, a set of like drop-off cubbies in this waiting room, which you can see in the lower left image. And again, we also have, you know, a large sort of transaction window for the admins to interact with a visitor. Again, still not operable. It is fixed and it is the, the bullet resistant glazing. And then the door from the waiting room actually into the suite, that's also on access control as well. Moving around the back of the admin area is where we have a little passageway to a conference room here as well. Same sort of conventions for access control. Visitors buzzed into the conference room. Once they're in, they cannot leave out the door that goes into the rest of the suite. And then to the right of that, we've got principal and vice principals' office. And then it's a little bit cut off below there. There's a restroom, an SRO office and a vault. We're reusing those desks that are modeled in that right picture. That's new furniture, so we designed around reusing those.
Do students have access without getting buzzed in if they need to go to the office for something, or do they get buzzed in from the hall?
To go to the cubbies?
No, to go, say a student needs to go talk to somebody in the main office, need to go see the principal.
So there is a door off the corridor for students.
That's just a, that's open without having to get buzzed in?
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
The other, so can you just jump back? So the other two outermost set of vestibule doors are, are gonna be the ones that are on the access control, if they're not already.
Couple of questions.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, no, no.
Where, so while this work's being done, where will you stage the interim office?
That's a great question.
It'll come down here to the, to the old middle school office.
Okay, so you're.
So we will literally transition everything that's happening on that end of the building to this end of the building, where our security is already in place, our access controls are already in place. It'll be an easy shift actually in this building.
As we get closer to the date for this work, we'll coordinate this with the district.
Secondly, like when we drop our kids off at that circle, would they go on that vestibule there? Like, so it looks like you're separating that huge vestibule.
Yes.
The lock is like, sort of like when the parents come for a meeting or to, to what have you. But the right side is like a bigger area that like where kids can go inside when they're waiting for the bell to.
That's, those are gonna be the drop-off doors.
So this is your secured entry into the building. And then this is free exit through here, holding area, off hours, these doors might be unlocked. This would be public access to the building.
Thank you. If you're bringing your child late to school, they've gone to a dentist appointment, you're bringing them back, they will come through the secure vestibule. That'll be the only way in which they can get buzzed in. But yes, otherwise that main morning traffic and after-school traffic is gonna run through the vestibule. We've also, I thought you were gonna ask this question. We've also talked about how when we are under construction, right now we have buses drop off on this end, parents drop off on that end. We can maintain that. We'll just move one of our access doors that kids can get to in terms of coming in. They won't be able to use the vestibule, but we can come down to the other side of that first set of stairwell doors. So go down in between where the bathroom is right now. Like there's a boys' bathroom there and a stairwell that leads upstairs. There's a set of doors there. We would just make that part of our morning traffic so that we don't clog traffic-wise on both sides of the building.
And we'll do our best to keep as much of this side open while we're doing, under construction on this side. You know, this wall can go up and create a, or we create a barrier somehow so that we're kind of inside there and you can still use that for the door.
So this is in the library. So, I mean, this is a full renovation. One of the big changes that you'll see in here is that existing ceiling hung unit that's in there right now, that it's, you know, it's, it's very, very low, that is moving to the roof. And that's how we're gonna achieve as much height in this space as we can. And that's why we've gotta, you know, touch some classrooms on the second floor because the ductwork is coming down from the roof through the second floor above the ceiling into this space. So on the floor plan here, the majority of the footprint of the existing library is remaining as is. The librarian in this space doesn't have a need or a want to display all her books, which is opposite than the elementary. She does want lots of display. So the librarian would rather have more space in here for large group instruction, small breakout areas. We've got about, about six breakout areas. In the top right corner there, that rectangular space, nope, next to the, yep. So in there, that is going to be the storage slash workroom for the librarian. She's got about ten, or excuse me, 6,000 volumes that she's got to store. So that's actually a high-density storage unit. To the left of that is the entrepreneur studio. That is in image number two. So that is gonna be a space where refreshments can be served during any sort of athletic and/or theater events. It was talked about, maybe the business classes use it, they, you know, in their STEM program. They concept and develop a product, you know, they sell it, you know, out of that. And then it's also, if this library is being used for something like this, a community meeting, the refreshments would be handled out of the, yes, the entrepreneur studio. So the bottom left picture, that is, if you're standing in the library looking back towards the other end, so that, that box on the bottom on the floor plan is what we're calling the innovation studio. It's essentially a digital media lab. So on the, on the very far wall down at the bottom, yep, that's planned to be a green screen wall. You know, any kind of student newscasts would be done from there. Any other kind of digital art and media would be done out of that space. It's gonna be set up like a small newsroom, but it's going to have all flexible furniture. So it's, I mean, the whole intent of STEM is to make things as flexible as possible. So as your program evolves, you know, your space can evolve with it without having to go through another project.
I have a kind of devil's advocate question.
Sure.
Say the librarian, we, we, and we have a new librarian, come on, and she does want to, she, he wants to display all of the catalog on the floor instead of in the storage room. How, how can that switch be flipped to accommodate a different, you know, a different teacher's way of working?
We haven't designed for that. You know, there's, there's storage, we're doing all new casework along the exterior wall that goes to the courtyard. But it's all enclosed shelving. And then the countertop is all at worktop height. If you did happen to come across that situation, you'd probably have to buy some furniture pieces to display books.
Thank you.
Most of the furniture that's gonna go in this space will be movable. In the future, there are smaller movable bookshelves that can be added to the space as well, handle some of those books.
So how does it work when kids wanna get out particular books? There's not, you're not available to browse through shelves of books?
Correct. They talk to the librarian about what they need and she will go into that back room and get it for them. Eventually, I also think she'll teach them how to do that. So similar to a collegiate library where they might refer to them as the stacks, right? You've gotta learn how to navigate. Obviously, all of our books are catalogued in a database. It's all electronic. So if the kids are looking for a particular title, that electronic database is gonna tell them where the book is. So in terms of in the stacks, which stack do I go to to get to it? So Mrs. Barber will spend some time teaching kids even how to, how to navigate the stacks so that they're prepared when they leave to go off to college. I do think you'll find some bookshelves across the library. So even though we're planning for her to be able to store all of her titles that way, Mrs. Barber is very artful about pulling things out that are new, things that the kids are interested in to get them into circulation. So for her, she doesn't feel like you need to see the spine of the book. She feels like she needs to, needs to display books that she knows will catch attention and get kids taking books out. But also this then gives the, the concept of that open, that open floor space where she's also teaching STEM classes in there, where she's doing all of the STEM for grade six. She's got kids doing robotics in there. So this gives her the flexibility to, to do both, to make her space concept inside the library, but also access to, to books. And lots of technology.
Is there any space for a, you know, reading room, come in and read the newspaper or something?
Definitely, the space is gonna have a lot of furniture in it where the kids will be able to sit very comfortably to, to either be able to work in groups or to sit and read. If you were to go in the library right now, I think especially in a, in a middle, high school, how do I say this in public? There's a lot of bookshelves, okay? So if the way kids are sitting, Mrs. Barber has to really work the library to make sure that she's doing out of her supervision. When you get rid of the bookshelves that are kind of taking up the space, like imagine, you know, kids sitting in chairs over here with bookshelves that are still this high, right? It's actually gonna change her line of sight. So she's looking forward to furniture that doesn't necessarily create that dead space for her in terms of line of sight. So I think you'll see an increase in her ability to not just manage the library, but for the library to have more of a library feel to it.
Do kids have free library time?
They do. The library is open most periods of the, of the school day. And Mrs. Barber runs an online pass system. So as you know, our blocks are 85 minutes long, so the kids can actually sign out a pass for half of that time. So they're able to go to the library out of the study hall, if that's where they're coming from, for 42 minutes, and then they'll return back to the study hall. So she does run a pass system every, every day in every block. Sometimes the library's closed because she's teaching, she's teaching, she's got a class in there. Teachers will partner with her and bring their whole class to the library.
Shannon, I have a quick question. I'm not sure if you have the answer. But how much additional ceiling clearance are we getting?
I think, so you can see the ceiling in image one and three. I wanna say we're at nine or nine six.
What are we at now?
Where that big unit is, you're probably like seven, six. The rest of the ceiling might be around eight.
That's gonna make it look a lot bigger.
Yeah.
Just lifting that ceiling up.
Yeah.
Yeah, just coming through the door and not having that.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
And then lastly, I just wanted to touch on, so Mike, can you point out where that mobile partition's gonna be? So that line right there, and in image number three, it's that wall of glass right there. So that is a mobile partition. It's operated manually. It's not electric. And there is, it's all clear glass and there is a door in it so that when it's closed, you can, you know, move from one side of that wall to the other. But you can also fully open that wall. And at that point, the library would be fully open to the, the innovation studio. And you just, you gain that much more square footage for whatever you might be working on as part of your STEM library. Same thing with line of sight. Kids are in there building a video commercial for their health class. They've got the door shut because they need the soundproofing to create their video, but Mrs. Barber can still see them. Yeah. So this is a shot of the same space, but from the corridor side. So we've got doors obviously at the library. And then we've got the door farther down to the right that's, goes right into that innovation studio. We're doing some decorative triangular soffits over those entries to really highlight those as the entry piece. And then in the hallway, those gray rectangular boxes, those are more display cabinets, again, book and project display. And then there are going to be video boards on either side of that for any kind of, you know, messaging or events or, you know, whatever might be happening.
Announcements, job postings, all of those.
The finishes in the corridor, we're gonna continue with that sort of, that pink and mauve tile that you've already got established on the wall there. But in the alcove, it's kind of tough to see. But in the door alcove, we're gonna do some large format white tile. And then the soffits will have that, you know, triangular tile that is the same as what's in the library out in the corridor. So this is something that we fought really hard to get in the project. This is the corridor side of the auditorium. We are always gonna be replacing the doors. But we spent a lot of time talking about, a lot of the rest of our spaces are pretty modern-looking. But this has, you know, definite historical character that we did not want to lose. So we spent a lot of time talking about how do we treat the new doors and the new entries and make them refreshed but classic. So we are going to keep a, a wood paneling design that's almost like a shaker profile around the, the two entry doors to the auditorium. We're going to continue that convention that we did at the STEM library with the triangular soffits just over the, the two auditorium doors to really highlight those. But then the two single doors on either side, they're getting replaced, of course, you know, so everything looks consistent. And then the, the single door in the middle is the new door to the control booth that we're creating. So you can see, yep, right there. So the only access into that control booth is going to be from the corridor. However, the wall that we're showing in the floor plan is not a full-height wall. It's only a partial height. From an acoustics perspective, that's, it's more preferable for whoever's running the soundboard to be able to hear the same thing that the audience is hearing. Auditorium seating. You guys, we can just breeze right through this, right?
No, but take your time.
So again, this is another thing that we talked about a lot. The image on the left is the drawing from when these seats were last replaced in, I think, the late 90s. And then the images on the right are obviously what you have now. I'm including them because I want to point out, I'm sure you're well aware, but if you sort of pay attention to where the seats are creating the. sort of pay attention to where the seats are creating the aisle, it's very inconsistent. You know, it moves in and out, the carpet actually, you know, starts to step back, and it's just, it's an inconsistent unfinished look. The fact that there is a curve in the aisle is also awkward. If somebody's coming down the aisle and they're, you know, need to go up on stage, they have to curve in to go back out, to get up on the stage. And I know I have heard a lot how uncomfortable these seats are. You have a mixture of 19-inch and 20-inch and 22-inch seats, and they're all sort of mixed around. And so we really wanted to get the, maximize the quantity of seats, maximize the comfort, but also try to, you know, maintain an e-rest path that makes sense down that aisle as part of our refinishing work for this project. So if you go to the next slide. So we went through many, many iterations, trying all, you know, a bunch of different things. Well, what happens if we do all 19-inch, or excuse me, all 20-inch seats? What if we do a mixture of 20 and 22s? What if we changed the aisle width? So we really had to find a balance between the quantity of seats that are needed for assemblies versus, you know, what you might need for, you know, a theater event with the students. The assembly situation has a lot more, has a higher need for seats than like a play or a musical event, and we're, you know, we're already losing two rows of seats in the back because of our sound booth. So I would bet there's probably seven or eight iterations of this that were done in total. You know, we played with, do we keep the curve in the aisle, do we straighten the aisle out? You know, we're obviously also limited by, you know, certain code things for the layout. So where we landed is the image on the right. That is showing 21-inch seats with 36-inch aisles, and then all of those green squares in the front, those are all going to be folding chairs that will be needed for any kind of overflow seating, you know, for whatever. And I think that gives us a total of 478 seats, including the folding chairs, but 415 without. And I think you've got something like 450 right now.
Yeah, so something Dr. Chanel talked about when doing this was how important it is to get the middle school, high school into the auditorium for assemblies or gatherings. And so that was something they really fought for, which the portable seating will assist with.
It has to, I mean, there's no other way.
Yeah, we should be good, even with the design without the folding seats, we should be good when it's just the middle high school kids, except teachers wouldn't be able to sit down. We need the folding seats because we need, we need the teachers in the room as well.
When were these, I haven't been real good at being quiet here. When were these seats replaced-ish?
Late 90s, I think.
Late 90s, so I probably was here. Regardless, let's say you guys are in Belmont doing a presentation, are you just going to randomly put a 22-inch chair and an 18-inch chair?
Nope, these are all.
No, 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 I'm not saying you guys, who was the?
Oh, you're talking about the last project.
Who on earth in 1990 would have just said, I'm going to put 13 different sized seats in here randomly, and then it was okay?
Yeah, I don't know.
Then it's a group.
I'm not saying that it was, might have been your project, it could have been possibly.
I don't think it was.
No, I'm just saying, why, why?
I, we did not.
It was not a seating capacity, I mean, it just, in all the iterations that we've gone through, to get seating capacity, it has to be that. You can't, if you go in and look now that you know that, now you won't be able to unseat that there are seats in there that are really small and some that are really large. So we've chuckled a little bit about people saying how uncomfortable the auditorium is. Well, you could be coming in as a family of five, and the dad ends up in the 19-inch seat, Kendall Garner gets the 22. There's just, it's that random.
I'm temporarily good, thanks.
Okay. The folding chairs Shannon was talking about too aren't just your typical metal folding chairs, we're looking at something that's got, that is a little bit more sturdy and substantial, and fabric matches the rest of the seats in them.
Are they permanent, the folding chairs?
No, they would be removed and put on a cart and stored somewhere when they're not needed.
Oh, okay.
Do you ever have plays or anything like that that have something that comes out where those seats would be? Do you know what I'm saying? I mean, I've been in places where they're, you know, they have.
They go off the stage and?
Yeah, they come off the stage and they're in front, and they build a wooden something in front of it, so everybody.
The green boxes are to get them where they need to be for assemblies. I don't think you would put them there for a play or a coral thing or something.
We were also thinking like fifth grade graduation, like there are some things that we do that as long as we're buying chairs that are going to match, that we should make sure that our auditorium always has that classic look, which this will allow us to have.
Well, where, well, where is the orchestra? Like if you have a play, is that down there?
They would be down there, but we wouldn't use the folding seats.
Yeah, I know, but is that where they would be?
Yes, that's the pit.
That's, that's a pit. Okay, that's, that's where I'm just trying to figure out.
And so this last slide here just is a rendering of approximately what the auditorium will look like. The backs of the chairs are all going to be dark gray. The fabric that we found has black and gray with touches of maroon in it. And then the chairs are going to look somewhat like that. We are going to have that light fixture, I think we're doing every other row, you know, for our new design. And then the rendering also shows, those rectangular things on the walls are all acoustic wall treatments. And then we're also replacing the ceiling in here, you know, with a very specific acoustic design that we worked with a theater consultant on. It's not just, you know, your basic ACT, there's a deliberate pattern in product to make that ceiling more acoustic.
So the lights on the chairs would be instead of like the LED strip lights that you see?
Correct. We're also replacing the carpet in here. When we tear out the existing chairs, all of that concrete is going to need to get like an overlayment to fill all of the holes, and that's all going to be refinished. So this should be, you know, a nice refreshed new auditorium at the end.
So this mock-up shows that there's some sort of an angle to those aisles, so there's still going to be an angle at the end, or is that just how this is?
This is an old render. This was more for, you know, looking at the seat and the wall finishes. The aisle will be.
It will be straight. They showed it straight on this one, and that was my confusion.
Yep.
So that's it. I have a bigger picture, a bigger picture question about the auditorium and the middle school, high school entrance. So when we are doing the middle school, high school entrance, we're going to stage here, and we also have auditorium work being done. Is the timelines of that being factored together so that there's not too much congestion up there? Does that question make sense?
Yeah.
Can I see the timeline again?
Yeah, can we go back, I don't know, there, thank you. So can you repeat that again? Sorry, I was trying to get this back up.
I'm curious, is the auditorium work, specifically the doors and all that, is having it the same time that we are going to be using this?
For your temporary main office?
Yes.
Because they're right across each other.
It hasn't been considered.
Talking about the high school.
Yeah, the corridor outside the auditorium.
Yep. Sorry, let me get those slides here. So we're talking about the outside of the auditorium here, right? So that timeline, that work will happen in conjunction with the auditorium work, which is this summer through the end of this year.
And it's the main office?
Last of the main office.
The main office?
Until spring.
Sorry, the main office is January 26 through beginning of the school year.
So right after.
We'll open the libraries, we'll open the auditorium.
Shut down the middle.
Not at the same, they won't be at the same. We tried not to have, we tried to phase the project out so we weren't taking over large areas of buildings and creating, you know, just getting in your way.
Perfect.
Yeah, we sat, there's definitely still things that we're not going to be able to do the way we've always done them. So for example, the auditorium, we only have one of those. We usually do our winter concert at the beginning of December. That isn't going to happen. Our winter concerts are going to be moved into probably early February, where we cut the ribbon on the auditorium and then host our first set of concerts, both at the elementary level and middle and high school, just by the nature of the renovation. So you will see some changes in next year's calendar, the kinds of things we host and when we do it, based on that.
What other questions does the board have? I had them ask.
I got a student safety slash faculty question. Can I just, please bear with me. There's going to be a clerk of works in charge of, first of all, how many contractors are there, approximately?
So Campus is in charge of managing all of the contractors, the contracts, the finances, the entirety of the project, along with the district. There are, that list that I had.
Is it 15, 20?
No, we have, I think, I believe seven prime contractors.
Seven primes, all right. And it'll be, say, you two, for example, walking around with a white hat, telling, for instance, the concrete in the auditorium wasn't shiny enough.
Yeah, so that is what the district has hired Campus to do as a construction manager, myself and my team, which includes my field manager, Sean, and our admin, Alicia. Sean will be the one who is, I don't know a better term, babysitting the contractors, but he's the one watching them.
That's fine.
And then, and then he reports back to me, I report into the district, to Dr. Chanel and, and team. That's kind of how it works. So our job on site is to make sure everybody's sticking to schedule, make sure that change management is being held properly, and all the finances are being handled properly.
That's all good, thank you. With, with, I'm getting to the safety part, just.
Sure.
It's 2025, does the technology exist that we're spending all this money, that, let's say the kitchen door opened right now, someone went out the kitchen door, that we could have a board somewhere, like perhaps our young lady in the police car where a light would light up, that door's open? That door just, does that technology exist?
It does, yes.
We have it, we do, all of our exterior doors have those on them. So if some, if we were in the middle of the school day when kids are in session, if someone is to use a door they're not supposed to use, actually, every administrator in this room is going to get an email.
An email or a, how often do you check your emails?
Well, here's, here's the whole day. They come to our phones as if it was a text, but also our secretaries are then trained that the second one of those comes through, they pull cameras in that area, they tell us exactly who went out that door, who used it, why they used it, the radio was at that door, you know, a student went out the door, or someone came through an external door.
All right, now, but I'm getting to the seriousness of this thing. You've got seven prime contractors, let's say, how many are any of them union?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Let's just say for this conversation, they all are, which is fine. You might be wondering why I'm going down the union level, it's safety. Let's say each contractor's got, just for conversation, say, 10 employees. When, first of all, every employee that's walking around the school for the 29 months, are they going to have a badge on it?
Yes. So our process for that is, nobody's allowed in your buildings without running their license through the Raptor system.
That's time to go.
So that, that happens, and we, we have a spreadsheet where we log every contractor who comes to the, to this site. When they get Raptored, and every 30 days, it reminds us, they need to come back and rescan. So every month, we're rescanning everybody who's working on site because things can change. They're also going to be issued an ID badge. It looks similar to what the staff and what we have, but they're bright yellow, there's a photo, their name, and the name of their company on it, this is Capital Project down there. So we've, we've met with the faculty at the elementary buildings, we'll be starting there soon, gave them the download on what, what to look for. But it is also our job to manage security during the project. It's actually a contractual obligation, it's in their contracts, that there is to be zero contact between any workers on site and any students or staff. None whatsoever. All communications go through us, through the architect and the district, and that's it.
That's, that's, that all, no disrespect, that, that sounds nice. But you're, you're telling me that you're going to have 70, 70 people, and you're going to just take 70 driver's licenses, and then you're going to determine if they're okay? That's it?
The rap, yeah, the Raptor program is what we use to screen people, so that checks the, I don't know where the database pulls from, but if they pass that, then yes, they can, they can.
It's like a background check.
It's a background check, it actually, I believe, what data is this, I think it checks the sexual factors.
That is pretty much all of us.
Yes. So, so they have to pass that, they have to also present us with their Posh卡, nobody can be working on site that's not Posh certified, at least a 10-hour course.
What happens when, we should use the auditorium, for example, that the guy isn't doing it right, and Joe lays him off and calls the hall, and Johnny comes, Johnny comes following Monday. But Johnny's brother Ricky just got parole from Anika on Friday, he comes too. I'm, I'm just.
So everybody, everybody that comes.
The driver's license to me isn't, I, I did the two towns at the airport in 2005 and 2006, and any of the thought, they, they went back to see what doctor delivered me in 1961, I just, I just want to have a good feeling about the Chevy, the Chevy pickup pulling in with his brother in it. How are you going to know?
So upfront, the process we're going through right now, we ask all the contractors to send us a list of all their employees that are going to be on this job. And we're actually trying to get ahead of the game and create these badges for them, so.
You're doing that as we speak?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. That would kind of get ahead of the game, and they can just get to work when they get here instead of waiting for that stuff to be created. If they're not on that list, we're going to, we're going to ask questions, you know, we're going to vet people who are coming on site in addition to the scan. I mean, there's really not a mechanism for us to dig much deeper than that. Say somebody, if that situation happened, I mean, if they're legit coming to work that day, there's really nothing we can save. If something were to happen, though, under our supervision, they're immediately gone. And we do know about it immediately.
If they bring a new guy in on Monday that wasn't there Friday, that's not on your list right now?
They have to come to our office first. They cannot report to any, any work, any part of the site, go in any building.
Just say that as a board member or someone walking on campus, if I see someone doing work, they're going to have this badge.
They will, and it should always be displayed, and I would, we're urging staff, we told the elementary staff this, we'll say the same thing to the high school, junior high staff.
If we see somebody without a badge that's working here, we could call Dr. Chanel.
Absolutely. So if anybody.
That doesn't add up to what we're being told.
Correct. They should always have it showing, it'll be clipped on or around a lanyard if you don't see it. I won't recommend approaching them to ask them, but always just let the, we do say to let your building leaders know, will be notified immediately, and we will come take care of the situation.
And one last question, and from past, past projects, let's just say, once again, 70. Would you say you come across three that aren't going to make the 70, and you're, is it kind of like that, or is it very seldom that you come across someone?
Personally, I've never come across a person that we had to turn away. I have, however, had people who were on site legit working who broke the rules and we had to kick them off.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from the board? We appreciate you guys coming out and giving us the overview. We're very excited about this project.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
We're excited to get started.
You know, we're also, depending on what you guys want to do, we can give tours sort of intermittently through the construction process.
Very interested in that, so that's a fun thing to do.
Yeah, well, as we go through, we'll set up some milestones, say, you know, when we have a space demoed, we can go in and look at it. Obviously, when it's done, it may be some during construction, so we'll just gauge that, we'll talk to Dr. Chanel when the time is appropriate. I've also done it as well, when you guys have to do your yearly building inspections, you know, we'll incorporate the project into that tour.
Thank you very much.
When the old boilers get, that should be video, video taken.
Everything is fully documented and photographed.
When they get taken out of the building.
Yes, you'd be happy about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do, I'm wondering, sorry. The gray water in the elementary building for the STEAM STEM lab, are we updating any of the larger infrastructure in the basement with this project? Don't believe we are.
So like all gross stuff that gets washed down?
From the library. Okay.
I mean, we'll have a solids collector, you know, at each of the sinks, but overall system upgrades, no.
Okay.
What's your concern?
We had a pipe, I think the stuff is ancient, you've probably seen it in the basement of that building that.
Oh, the crawl space? Yes. I think that's already been, hasn't that already been replaced before Bob left?
Yes, I think we did a section of it.
Yeah.
In an emergency project.
Yes.
It was a mess.
Yes.
Okay.
So all the junk that gets washed down the sinks in the steam rooms won't clog stuff up?
Correct.
There's, there'll be something you could take out and empty your basket.
Can you imagine the stuff?
No, thank you.
I don't know if we told Rita about that part. Good question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So when that front door opened that I helped her back to the seat, did someone get an email?
Not in after hours. So like, right now, you could pretty much use any door that you want, and we wouldn't get notified, but when kids are in this building and we're running our type of security, absolutely you can have your door. You're welcome.
Cool.
Good night.
Thanks, you guys.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is public forum. We do not have anything else for public forum tonight, so we are going to do the superintendent's report. That is the elementary and middle school, high, middle high school compact committee updates. Dr. Chanel.
Yes, so Mrs. Meyer is going to go first. Both principals are going to give updates on how compact committee is going from their perspective, so who the board has been reporting out, which we appreciate, but I'd like to hear from principals this evening.
Sure. Okay, we just had our meeting, so this worked out beautifully. All right. Many of you already know that the compact committee meets, and then we have what we call party time, which is with our PTO. So it's kind of like a back of the house and a front of the house. All the fun things that you listen to with the points of pride definitely get spearheaded from our PTO. So they kind of just wait for me to get, we work hard, don't we, Peggy, you and me? Peggy loves to come for the compact portion, so I appreciate her commitment to it, because everybody just wants to move me along, but we stay in the course. So we have three goals this year. The first one was to really explore and learn more about our volunteer opportunities. We had a lot of new parents on our committee, so it was really nice to go through and go and walk step by step between all the opportunities and our process of how to become a volunteer. The second one was considering hosting a curriculum night for parents, focusing on IXL and other, other areas. And now that we have Lindsay on board as director, that is something that we're going to be exploring, and I'll talk about that in just a moment with the survey that came back. But Lindsay did already come into our compact and PTO meeting and did a full report on IXL, our benchmarking system, and it was really well received. So they asked some really great questions, and I think we talked about that too last time. So moving on to the next one, my last goal was to provide families at least three opportunities to provide us feedback. So we already did the beginning of year, and we deployed the middle of year, so between my last update and now, we created the mid-year, we sent it out, and we reviewed the results. So I will go over those with you. And if you ever want to see it, Dr. Chanel does have a printout, and so does Peggy. Feel free to share it as a committee.
I got to ask for that by somebody, so if we can get those as a board, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, yeah. Dr. Chanel has my exact printout, she will share it with you, not a problem. The process with the committee, we went through each and every question and every single comment, so it's out there for you to see for sure, and the committee already looked at it, and we discussed some things. So we have three sections to the short survey. The first, communication, second, academics, and the third, just school environment. Couple of questions for each, about two, plus an opportunity for families to comment. So comparative to our beginning of year, where I had forty-seven responses, we had thirty-nine this time, okay? And like we talked about before, I think, I think Superintendent Mohlasani said that we had more than with the superintendent surge that first beginning of year. Sometimes getting surveys, if people are feeling like things are going well, they may not want to. Like, I never hit the target survey after my online purchase. I got it, it's great, moving on. So that's kind of how I'm taking this. However, we did look at a lot of the comments, and I will explain those in just a second. So for communication, overall, over ninety-two percent of those that completed the survey felt that we had effective or very effective communication as a school district. I'll go to a couple of the, the subcomments, praising our teachers for their communication. We have, but it became clear when we were talking that in some of the comments, it was, I absolutely get communication when I ask, or these teachers are really good at it, and I get it every single day, or every week, or every month. So for me, it felt a little disjointed, and one of the things we talked about as a compact, and I think this might be one of our goals for next year, building goals, not I think, I know, is to create a common practice of what it is that we are sending out to families at minimum. So at the, at the office level, we send something out every week. I find it pretty reasonable. But I'm going to work with the teachers, Mr. Green and I, and come up with a system that makes sense of when we report out on Parents Wear, whether that be a newsletter from your teacher, as opposed to leaving it up to the educator to do that. So we heard that loud and clear from our families. They loved that idea, so that, more to come on that for next year. Then we move down to academics. Over eighty percent feel that their student has adjusted well to the grade level expectations, and that they have the necessary tools and resources to succeed in their year. I was really pleased by that. Some of the comments for academics were that our expectations may be too high for some of their, from some of their kiddos. There was a couple comments about, you know, how there used to be nap time, how this is a really long school day, so very well can understand that. Yeah, so again, praising a lot of the teachers, and then giving us a little, couple pieces of feedback. And then the third, which I was the most pleased overall, right? Because as a mom myself, and as parents, we really want our kids to not only be scholars, but to be well taken care of, emotionally, socially, learn all of those skills, and the families that filled the survey out, ninety-five percent felt that their children are receiving the necessary support for social and emotional well-being. So, I mean, if we were rating a car that we were going to buy, we would be buying that car. So I felt really pleased by that, and the families really spoke to that. So one of the, then at the end, we gave, in the first survey, we said, would you even be interested in a parent night? This is where my other goal kind of crosses. And some said it depended on the topic. So the question at this survey was, what's the topic that you are hoping for? We did have a comment for math, which I'm not surprised about, like, how do we teach it? What do I do with our homework? Then there was also another suggestion for a parent night that really stems about how to best support my child when they come home from school. And then I think that that might be the angle, because we could have many different pockets of subject areas, content areas, that we could speak to. So that is kind of my big umbrella, and when talking with Lindsay Nacks about how to plan something like this. Our committee felt like they may not come to a event, but that they may like a series of videos. So I thought that would be cool, too, like 101 of how to teach your, your student, how to, your child how to read, or this is how we do math, or here are the resources for you to go and find a YouTube video that you can help sit next to your child. Because I know, once I got to a certain grade level, and my son is in advanced math, he's not coming to me. So where can I go for those resources to help? Okay? So that was something really nice. And then the other comment that I really appreciated was, somebody put that we should create a guidebook, similar to the middle high school course selection, but for elementary. Although we don't have courses you're choosing from, we do have curricular snapshots at every grade level. My God, why wouldn't I put that in a, almost in a manual, and then put that out there? So that doesn't seem like a big lift. I feel like that's something that can definitely happen, and I was pleased to see that comment. I was like, yeah, I can do that, something we can do. And have it on Google, and every year, we just go and revise with our team leaders, our grade chairs. I think it's great work that can be done, so. Overall, the survey was great. Dr. Chanel will share it with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Peggy, anything else that I might be missing that we've accomplished thus far, though? You've been at all, yeah.
Yeah.
Nothing?
Yeah, there was a comment about buses, and in terms of.
And the last one?
Yeah.
Or this one?
Yeah, and this last one about, you know, somebody's, you know, you can't see what's going on with the, the big seats and the little kids and all that sort of stuff, you know?
So I love that you bring that up, because actually, Dr. Chanel and I met with our transportation director in the last couple weeks, and we basically took our, and our parents in the building would know this, but the community wouldn't. So we took our Raider Five with the bracelets and students earning based on those qualities on the road. And so the drivers really wanted to have this type of reward system, but also not rewarding the poor behavior that was occurring on the bus. So one way that they kind of blended the school and the road was to start giving out these yellow bracelets that say the Raider Five on it, it's amazing. And then we're celebrating the bus and only the students that are earning those bracelets with a treat. So our shout out to Bus 97 that won this month, they'll be getting an ice cream treat on Thursday afternoon, so, and we invite the driver and things like that. But it is a constant pulse of the bus, and going on, and Mr. Green is walking around while I'm on the walkie on one side, and he's on the other, and we're definitely going on the bus and checking to make sure students are being safe and ready for the road.
The drivers have been really committed to it. They definitely want every word behavior that they're excited about. So the first day that they were giving out awards, I jumped on buses to try to be on there and listen to the kids and get their rewards. And one little boy, I said, did you get one? He goes, he holds up his hand, he said, I did. He says, what's going to happen? And everybody on the bus gets it. I said, you are going to have the happiest bus driver in the world.
That's the goal.
That's the goal, right?
Yep.
That's the goal. That is the goal. So I do think it's imperative that we, you know, call out and bring attention to the kind of behavior that we want, and not maybe celebrate the whole bus. If there are kids that aren't doing what we want, is we're trying to create bus behavior that matches that. The drivers were not only all about that, but it's the only way they were willing to work on solving the problem, so.
And they wanted to do it on their own. They actually said, for Pete and I, we got this. We will send you the list of kids to recognize on the morning announcements, we don't need you to do any of it. So Mrs. Orr in the, in the transportation director department has been spearheading that list for us, and giving it to Pete and I every week, so that we can give shout-outs to those students that are earning their positive behavior, so.
That's good.
Definitely addressing the ones that should be addressed, but celebrating, switching our minds.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Of course.
And she thinks the course guide that you could just whip out in a couple of months seems like a small project. We're now talking to the third principal, because this one thought it could also be whipped out very quickly.
Yeah, right, right.
Welcome, Mr. Manz.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. We didn't have partying on our agenda, but we did have party planning. We spent a lot of time talking about the, the senior banquet, and we did a thorough job, thorough job of going through the, the business in, in the community who we received donations from. So that was very impressive, and I was also very appreciative and impressive of the number of people from the community that were at the compact meeting. There were a number of interested parents, and that's great. Typically, I'm sure there were more at the elementary, which is typical, but really, the attendance was, was very heartening, so I really appreciate that. And we, we made a lot of headway on the, on the banquet list, and those plans are, are moving forward. The next thing, and you did the heavy lifting, the compact committee did before I got there, but we actually handed out physical copies of the middle school curriculum guide, so everybody was pleased about that. We spent the last part of the meeting going through the code of conduct. There weren't really many substantial changes or suggestions, there were some, some edits that were pointed out. I had, you know, we kind of went through each section, and emphasized that a lot of this is statutory, the way that the whole thing is, is established. The one thing that I did bring up to the compact committee was, if we wanted to do something about truancy, and that's something I'm going to be bringing to the board, not necessarily the expectation of being in school, because that is clearly enumerated in the code of conduct, but whether or not willful truancy should be something that we should add as a, as, as a consequence, because it's not really listed, it's not very, very clear. So I would just want to do a little bit more research before we get to the end of the year, and I can bring that to, to the board. The, the last thing, really, that was brought up as we were going through, is, is there any anticipated change to the code of conduct, you know, relative to any mandates that we may get from the federal government, or any government level? And really, we are, you know, dictated by the state with that, and that's what I pointed out, and so should there be any changes to that, the mandates of the code of conduct, we would certainly be hearing from the state before any, any changes were made. Again, I really appreciated the dialogue and the opportunity to meet with the, the parents and kind of vet the code of conduct, and also hear how much, how much support there is in this community, particularly for, for our seniors and all of our students, but in this particular case, the, the seniors. Because I don't know if there's anything else that I left out, I think we covered it. Now we have to, we have to plan a party for the next one. Any questions, anything that I can answer for you?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to new business, presentation of a proposed 2025, 2026 school budget. Dr. Chanel.
Mr. Capren. Dr. Capren, sorry. We will co-present this evening. All right, ladies and gentlemen, from the time, from the time you saw us last, we have made some changes to our appropriations to bring you this evening, what we would refer to as a balanced budget proposal. So we have closed that gap by making some changes, which we'll share with you in just a moment. We are going to ask this evening for a resolution to adopt this budget, both Dr. Capren and myself, and I'm sure all of you, now that you're back involved with NISBA and getting the kind of updates that we're seeing. It does not look like we're going to see many changes, if any, in our revenue. We are currently working on a budget that no one seems to, at the state level, to be in a very big hurry to finalize. The quote I read last night from the governor was, the schools will have what they need in time to do what they need to do. And I thought to myself, that was last week, or maybe the week before, and we don't have it. So definitely, our advocacy groups, NISBA included, NISCIS, NICET, everyone is pushing at the state level for a budget to be adopted. So this evening, what we have done is made sure that with our forecasted revenue from the governor's original proposal, anticipating that we will not see more revenue, we have taken our forecasted appropriations and brought them down to match what we know our revenue to be, because that is the right thing to do for our school community. So what did we do to get you to a balanced budget? Refinements to appropriations. So last time we were together, we already talked about the fact that some of the requests that the principals made for growing program have already been removed out of this budget, so you will not see STEM teacher at the middle high school. We're not going to replace an academic intervention teacher at the elementary school through attrition. We are not going to fund our strength and conditioning coach. We're going to redo some of our summer curriculum expenditure. We are going to maintain, instead of growing that technology budget, something that we do need to continue to talk about year after year. As Dr. Capren said to me today, we, we are going to gimp along in a maintenance technology budget, budget, and maintaining our facilities budget where they are. So that continues to put us in that space where we may be talking about some emergencies that we might have, and making sure that we're bracing ourselves for some of that. We're going to defer some parking lot sealing. We've done a great job in the last couple of years at making sure that we're maintaining our parking lots. Because if you go back to the presentation we had this evening for the capital project and you were to revisit all the areas of the campus where we are gonna have mill and asphalt put down, there's no reason for us to seal this year because three quarters of it is gonna be new. We do believe that the little bit that will not be new, that we will be able to possibly pull into this particular project. Otherwise, you're talking about one lot really that's not gonna be touched. It's this old middle school lot here outside of our field. We're also gonna maintain our current number of lunch monitors. That was a request in the original budget proposal at the middle high school to try to run a tighter academic intervention model at the middle and high school during that home base time, to pull teachers out of lunch duty and try to put some lunch monitors in there. That's now been pulled. And we also have a grant writer. We pay into a BOSI's grant writing COSER, and we are gonna drop that COSER. That particular one is one that we can pick up, should we decide that we have the money to invest in that or that it would be fruitful for us. The budget that you are going to adopt this evening, I hope, is a mission-driven budget. We care very deeply here about safety and security. Our facilities and our infrastructure have always been of top priority to us. We know that kids cannot learn if they are not in a learning environment that feels safe and that families will not send them if they do not feel like our infrastructure and facilities are safe. So this budget does take care of protecting the investments to our campus. It does support security upgrades. We do have a project, a camera project, where more security cameras will be added to our current system. This budget does provide a school resource officer in each of our buildings. This budget does contain purchases of a brand-new school bus to make sure that our fleet is of high quality and safe every day when we're out there rolling. We are maintaining our transportation equipment replacement, which is fantastic. And in our project this year, we are gonna be doing some upgrades to the heating systems. So we'll talk about the capital outlay project, but that is included in this budget. Also included in this budget is our commitment to offering a high-quality instruction for our kids and their student life. It matters to us very deeply that our kids have experiences beyond the classroom. All of the experiences that our community has grown to love and appreciate about what it means to be a Raider are still in full effect in this particular budget. Also, we have added a focus on literacy for the upcoming school year. So there is some staff development budget line there for us to really take literacy on. The state of New York is asking us to really reexamine the science behind the teaching of reading. And in order for us to do that, we need to make sure that our teachers have proper staff development and proper resources. We are gonna continue to grow our STEAM experiences at the elementary level and at the middle high school level. Even though we're not gonna be able to put a full-time STEM teacher in at the middle level, we have been working with the University of Rochester to continue building some coursework for our eighth graders, that area of gap that we know we have in that course guide, to make sure that we're encouraging students to take four years of math and science. We want them to be fully engaged. And again, we want every Raider to find their voice. So those opportunities in extracurriculars, our musicals, all the opportunities that the elementary school offers after school, we want our kids to see themselves as a larger part of the student body. So those components are still in this mission-driven budget.
That page that you just read?
Yes.
I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, you went through it quickly, and you know what you're talking about.
I do.
Something like that. If you had that available to us, is it May 13th? Is that the night?
Yes.
That would be good.
If, for certain people that are just gonna come, just negative as hell. I mean, I don't know if we can hand this out, or if you can just start the meeting with that. I mean, before you even talk about any numbers, any, anything. I mean, just, just a suggestion. I mean, if I were sitting in the audience and hadn't been here for 100 years, I would have been impressed with what you just.
I think so.
How you just presented that, not knowing anything about numbers.
Thank you. I will start with that.
And if I make one quick comment. I was with a young man, some people would know, who's now a social worker in the city, working things. And my husband was talking with him more, but he was saying like, like only, like 60% of the kids don't even come to school. This one particular kid that he helps out with, his grandmother, who's in charge of him, doesn't want him going outside because it's dangerous. And, you know, all this stuff. And I'm like, oh, my goodness. So, yeah, so to emphasize what it means to get a quality education and good character development and good social this and that is really important because, my goodness gracious, listening to him, you know, and it was really something.
That's one thing I think we can be so super proud of, that I think sometimes people lose sight of, is that the high-quality instruction that happens here every day, the kind of opportunities that kids have. And we might be small in numbers, but we're large in opportunity. And it has been a commitment of this community. It is what the community continues to provide to its students regardless what's happening financially at the state level, regardless what's happening in districts around us. This district has always really held tight to being mission-driven. It's one of the things that makes me so proud to be here. Money part. I could do this slide. You would be proud. How well I can now do this slide.
Really just wanted to highlight that, you know, the core part of our revenue is driven by state aid. That's the biggest single component of the revenue that we receive. And we really work to make sure not only do we get the foundation aid, which, you know, is a core part of what the state provides for some basic education, and we'll finalize when the budget comes through. But we also really work to maximize all the expense-driven aids. So whenever we possibly can, we drive expenses through BOSI's. We really work to maximize our transportation aid and all the other aids that we can to really support the taxpayers of the community through maximizing that state aid. We also are strategically using reserves. We're appropriating funds specifically from the savings to support the budget and using restricted reserves for their allowed uses as part of the budget. And we do have some areas where it's a little bit interesting that, you know, some of the things are hard to forecast, particularly in upcoming economics things. But we do have forecasts in for the sales tax, our share of the Monroe County sales tax in the budget. So basically with that, we have an increase, as you'll see, a balanced budget with a 5.1% increase in our revenue. And just to balance that, we also have, of course, the core parts of our expenditure budget. You know, with a considerable part of, the biggest part of the budget, of course, going into instruction. Employee benefits are part of that. We're people business, so salaries, benefits, you know, what really go into driving the culture and the education and the instruction in the district. We also, you'll see an increase in debt service in this budget. That debt service is what's being used to pay our capital costs. There's actually, the increase in debt service is being offset with aid or anticipated aid, and it's kind of shifting the budget based on the capital project, but it's not really having an impact on the taxes that the local taxpayers are paying. So in fact, with this budget, the actual tax levy is going up 2.3%, which generates about $180,000 of your money. And so the impact of someone with a $150,000 house in the district with basic star exemption would be about $38.50. So it's the impact of the local taxpayer for this budget.
A year?
For the year.
Right, so it's like $4 a month. They'll have to try to remind them on May 13th that are, these are the same people that are saying that my school tax is $500 and.
No.
Thank you.
So, you know, this is, you know, basically the school collects that levy amount. And if it's going up 2.3%, then people would assume their bill's going up about 2.3%. Finally, one of the core parts of the finance, a requirement of reporting and a metric that people like to use is really thinking about how much of the budget is divided between program, which is really our instruction, our capital, which is maintaining facilities and includes all of our expenses for electricity and water and heat, along with the capital projects and grounds maintenance and things like that. And then the administrative and leadership budget, which really is, of course, you know, the core part of all the administration of the building, as well as business, finance, superintendent's office, and external costs that are shared across the entire district. So that's really broken up here. And you can see, we've got, you know, significantly, over 70% of the budget, 72% of the budget is really for program and instruction. And then we've got about 15% for capital and 13% in administrative costs. One of the documents that you have, and a required document that we're asking the board to approve after the budget resolution, is the property tax report card. This is a required filing that we want to provide not only to taxpayers in the district, but also is a requirement to file in a couple of places with the state. And would be part of a detailed budget package that'll be in the, all the district offices, the libraries, as well as online. And it basically will highlight last year's budget to this, compare last year's budget to this year's budget, the levy to this year's budget to next year's, you know, the coming year's budget to last year's budget. And it lists a variety of information that you'll see, you know, in the handout. Are there any questions on that?
Thank you.
In this budget, we do have a capital outlay project that we will approve this evening when and if you approve this particular budget proposal. We're gonna invest in the $100,000 capital project this year. Everything will happen in this building, the middle high school, and we're gonna be converting from pneumatic technologies, which are very, very old, into technology that is very, very new. So everything here will move into a more digital system. It's gonna allow us to have better access control to our heating, since everything will then be digital and manageable on a desktop or even on a cell phone for our facilities director, should we need to make adjustments. So this capital outlay project is buildable, which means that we're buying all of the equipment that will be required from day automation off of a state contract list. So we will not waste one single cent of the money that was set aside for this particular project. We'll buy as many units and install them as we can until we reach that threshold of the $100,000. What happens if we take this budget out to vote and it does not pass? So if the budget does not pass, the board has a couple of decisions to make. You actually can take the exact same budget and you can put the same budget up for a second vote. If the second vote of the exact same budget is defeated, that would result in the adoption of a contingent budget. Under a contingent budget, we actually have very specific rules that we'd have to abide by around what we can spend. It would have to equal a 0% cap, no levy, which is a big deal to us, being able to run this budget. So it is imperative that all of us are feeling really good about this budget. To Mr. Bigford's point, when we get to that community presentation, we will be ready to answer any questions. In fact, Dr. Capron and I are more than happy and will start reaching out in the next couple of days to some community partners to ask, like, can we get out and meet with the fire department? Who else would like to sit with us to talk about what our budget looks like? We know that the reserves are a conversation for our community right now. We will not shy away from having conversations with folks about the reserves and what they mean, why the reserves make us healthy, how we can help folks understand that we have not overtaxed them, that in fact, we are building the most judicious, financially imperative budget we can possibly build. I think, I've always listened, and I've shared this with the Advent team. For years, I've sat over here or in other chairs and listened to superintendents propose a budget to the board. And I've always thought, man, I'm tired of hearing about politics in the state of New York. Right now, I could stand up on this podium with a bullhorn and yell about the politics in the state of New York. There are definitely things that we need to have happen in order for us to do a better job. If we want to be more transparent in a budget process, we have to know what our appropriations are gonna be. We have to know what our revenues are going to be. We need more reserves than what we have right now. We need the state of New York to open a reserve for special education. If they did that alone, they would help districts be far more transparent with their communities. We have to prepare for the unknown. And so the budget that we are presenting to you tonight does have the premise of carrying budget to budget. It also does have built into it the ability for us to take care of some of the unforeseen. Because as you know, we can only spend what the community approves at the budget vote. If our appropriations go up more than what we have planned for and we don't build in some contingency into our budget, we will not be able to take care of the needs of kids. That is not who we are as a community. And Dr. Capron and I are willing to sit in front of any group of folks and explain to them why we think the way we do as we are budget building and why the reserves are imperative to us, maybe more so in times like these. Just talking today about the forecasting of what our economy might look like with tariffs. The forecasting of what happens if, now that the state of New York has told the federal government that they are not gonna certify differently, the way that we handle or conduct ourselves around the teaching of DEI. What does that mean for federal funds? What does that mean for us now that we've planned a budget that we're going to adopt if we all of a sudden lose close to $1 million? The reserves are imperative for us to maintain the level of education that we have committed to having here at Caledonia-Munford. So they certainly serve a purpose. Luckily for us, we have a very supportive community. So over, this is your 10-year average, over the support of the community in terms of yes votes or no votes. What our tax levy change has really been, so if you look at that consistently, the district has done a very good job of going out and a tax levy that's pretty low and also pretty consistent. So look how close we almost always are to 2%. I know for me, in terms of budgeting at my home, I would not love it if the district all of a sudden increased the levy to 10%, right? So we've been able, the way that we are planning, the way that we do use reserves in order to offset our budget when we're doing budget development, we've been very, very consistent with the way in which we raise taxes here in our community. The budget difference that we're used to seeing is 2.1. I am gonna take you back to a slide. Let me see how quickly I can get there. I wanna talk about this year's budget over budget, where we talk about our budget-to-budget increase. You see that percent change at the bottom there of 5.1%. That looks, I said this to Dr. Capron this morning, that looks like this is a pretty bloated budget. So I wanna talk about what that number would actually be if we were not launching a capital project.
So if we remove, if we remove the debt service line and the increase that's shown there that again is offset by aid and not impacting our taxes, it would take it down to about 3.9%, you know, 3.9% increase. So from an operational point of view, it's a more conservative budget and more, a little more in line with the history of what's there considering the other cost drivers that we're all seeing these days.
So in each of our budget presentations, we've talked about the fact that with the capital project coming on, you're seeing an increase in appropriations. We're gonna see an increase in aid and how they offset one another. But definitely in the budget-to-budget, that looks like we increased quite a bit. So I just wanted to draw your attention to the fact that that does have to do with that capital project. Propositions that our voters will vote on, there will be three. We are gonna ask our voters to adopt the $21,668,678 as our annual budget for the school district for fiscal year '25-'26. We also have two members of the Board of Education up for election. We have, we have two vacant seats that we will have on the proposition. And also, we are going to ask that they approve a resolution for us to purchase a bus.
For what?
To purchase a new bus.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A diesel fuel bus.
A diesel fuel bus. Yes, I saw that too today. Right now, in terms of us as a district, we are not looking at purchasing buses that are not diesel until we are told that we must. Our plan is to maintain our current fleet the way that we have been maintaining our fleet, which is to purchase a diesel bus every year. We have a cycle for our buses that runs about 10 years, and we are going to maintain that cycle for as long as we're able to.
Will it have the air conditioning?
This new bus will have air conditioning, yes. It will be the first bus in our fleet to have that, and I'm sure the drivers will be fighting over it. Maybe it will be the bus of the month. We did tell them that the other day. So save the dates. As of right now, I am gonna ask that we continue to save the date for April the 21st. I have done just a little bit of deep diving. I do believe that if we adopt a budget this evening, that we should be good to move full speed ahead with that budget. However, I know that you're probably feeling the nerves I'm feeling. So I just want you to know that if we do need to make changes to the budget, we do have some time to do that. Should we decide to come back on the 21st and adopt a different budget based on any changes, although I'm not foreseeing them, please know that that date is still on the table for us should we feel we need it. We do need to give notice to the community should we decide to cancel that particular meeting. We need to give a three-day notice. So I would ask that the board just continue to save the date, and we will make that decision as we get closer. May 13th is our public budget hearing. We do invite the community to come out and ask all of their questions. Can submit their questions in advance, and I'm open to fielding those questions any day of the week. And then on May the 20th, we will hold our annual budget vote. That will happen over in our district office, and voting will begin at noon and close out at 9:00. For, in our budget newsletter, we will talk about how to request ballots for those that cannot make it in to vote in person. Budget newsletter is under development right now and will be out on time. All of our legal notices have been hitting the paper, and I think we are on track. What do you think, Dr. Capron? Are we good? What questions do you all have for us? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We're gonna move into adoption of the proposed 2025-2026 annual school budget. Resolve to adopt. to adopt the proposed budget of expenditures for the fiscal year 2025-2026 in the amount of $21,660,678, for the purposes shown in the statement of estimated expenditures adopted by the Board of Education. By one in the same is approved and the amount thereof shall be raised by a levy of a tax upon the taxable property of the school district. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question, since I wasn't here last time. Has, has the contract with the teachers been adopted? I mean, does, is this, is that going to cause any ripples in terms of money?
What I will share with you is very similar to what I said last time. We have to balance our budget. We know what our revenue is going to be. We, we predict what our appropriations are going to be, but we have to stay within what we know our revenue is. So we're, we're kinda capped there,
Right.
at being able to spend no more than what we know our revenue is will be.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Approval of property tax report card. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the 2025-2026 property tax report card. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Approval of BOSE's administrative budget for the 2025-2026 school year. Resolved at the Board of Education of the Caledonia-Munford Central School District hereby approves the proposed administrative budget for the Genesee Valley Bosse's Board of Education members. Resolved at the Board of Education of the Caledonia-Munford Central School District cast its vote in the annual election of members to the Board of Cooperative Educational Services for the following: Norbert Fuest, Roger Kostewski, Robert, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, Roger Kostewski, Robert DeBarker, Christie Crandall Bean. I apologize if I did not say those names correctly. May I have a motion, please?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Election of Genesee Valley Bosse's Board of Education members. Resolved at the Board of Education of the Caledonia-Munford Central School District cast its vote in the annual election of members to the Board of Cooperative Educational Services for the following: Norbert Fuest, Roger Kostewski, Robert DeBarker, Christie Crandall Bean. I apologize if I did not say those names correctly. May I have a motion, please?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
There's four people there, running for three seats.
Mrs. Boos is checking her notes. Get this one second here.
Do we have to cast our vote tonight?
We don't.
That's a good catch.
Mike, I don't Should we motion to table that?
Yes. I think we need to table that. Thank you for noticing that. Until we can figure out what the discrepancy is. Moving on to six. Appointment of the head election inspector and election officials. Resolved at the Board of Education, appoint the head election inspector and election inspectors for the Livingston County Board of Elections list for the annual school budget vote and board election on May 20th, 2025. May I have a motion, please?
Liz, can we back up quick to number five, and we'll make an official motion to table that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll make a motion to table number five. Give me a second.
Can I have a second?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. I'll start over with six. Appointment of the head election inspector and election officials. Resolved at the Board of Education, appoint the head election inspector and election inspectors from the Livingston County Board of Elections list for the annual school budget vote and board election on May 20th, 2025. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. The next resolution will make many people happy. Revision to the school calendar. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the revision of the school calendar to include Friday, May 23rd, 2025, the Friday before Memorial Day, as a day of recess for students and staff. Much deserved. May I have a motion, please?
Yes.
A second?
Second.
Any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Officers and appointments. Resolved at the Board of Education, appoint the following interim officer as listed, effective April 9th, 2025. Dignity for, for all coordinator, middle high school, Mr. Robert Manzer. Motion, please?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
This, do we have two of these? Or is there one in the elementary and one in the high school?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number nine. Approval of transportation requests to out-of-district non-public schools for 2025-2026. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the transportation requests to out-of-district non-public schools for the 2025-2026 school year. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, one, one question. So is this another case where if, if new students are coming into the district and all of a sudden we have to transport them, that money is available some, someplace?
So if, if families are wanting us to transport their student to a non-public school, so a private school, if they miss our submittal deadline to get permission for this, and we already have a run that's going anyways, we typically do approve those after. They don't, because they don't have an added cost for us, we already have a bus going that direction. Good question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Before moving to executive session, I believe Dr. Chanel would like to make an introduction.
I would. So this evening, in, in our audience, I, we do have someone I would like you guys to meet. So Brennan, I'm gonna put you on the spot for a second. I told you I wasn't going to, but now, now I'm back.
Did you do that?
Yeah, we just did it. So Brennan is, is, there is a resolution for the board when we come back out of executive session, that you guys will have an opportunity to act on. But Brennan is here this evening. It is typical in a lot of districts that folks that are being appointed on the night that they're being appointed, they like to come to the board meeting to, to be introduced to the Board of Education. So ladies and gentlemen, this is Brennan Colwell. Brennan Colwell, the Board of Education.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, sir.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks for staying all two hours.
What would the start date be of that appointment?
Um, that depends on, so like, when we, once we approve the, the resolution, then people have to give 30 days
Okay.
or 60 days notice for their contracts. I believe this one is possibly 30 days.
Mine's 30.
Okay.
May 9th.
Thanks.
We're gonna move to executive session. Thank you for being with us.
Thanks for having me.
Resolved at the Board of Education, adjourn to executive session at 7:58 to discuss employment, employee history of pregnant persons, and confidential student records protected by FERPA. May I please have a motion?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Welcome back from executive session. Resolved at the Board of Education, return to regular session at 8:41 PM. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's carried. First, we're gonna go back to number nine on new business. We got that clarified. There are four appointments. Nope, not nine.
Five.
Five. Apologies, I just took over to number one. Number five, election of Genesee Valley Bosse's Board of Education members. Resolved at the Board of Education of the Caledonia-Munford Central School District, cast its vote in the annual election of members to the Board of Education, Educational Services for the following: Norbert Fuest, Roger Kostewski, Robert DeBarker, Christie Crandall Bean. I apologize if I got those names wrong. Mike's making me do it twice. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
What changed since the first time we did it?
There was a question about if there was three that we were electing or four, so we confirmed those four.
Oh, it was four. Okay, thank you.
Yep. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. All right, now let me get back to where I was. Moving to personnel. Personnel one, approval of substitute. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve Shannon Fenderson as a substitute for food service helper, effective April 9th, 2025. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number two, appointment of business administrator. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve Brennan Colwell to the 1.0 FTE probationary appointment of business administrator. Tenure position, effective May 9th, 2025 through June 30th, 2029. The appointee holds school district business leader internship certificate. May I have a motion, please?
Yep.
A second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number three, appointment of baseball coach. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, appoint Larry Harvey as a modified baseball coach for the 2025 spring season. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Approval of unpaid coaches. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the following unpaid coaches for the 2025 spring season. Desiree Lyman for softball, Megan Mitleggie for softball, Ronald Hovaker for baseball. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Moving to adjournment. Resolved at the Board of Education, adjourn the meeting April 8th, 2025 at 8:44 PM. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Have a good night.